Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 23rd City Council meeting. Clerk Swolfe, would you please call the rule?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pallavani-Glu.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Here.
There are eight members present, a quorum. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody from council that would like to remember somebody at this time? Vice President Hussein?
Yeah, very quickly, if folks could remember the friends and family of Todd Stiles. Todd passed away a few days ago of a heart attack. He had spent nineteen years with the Meyer Corporation before coming over to the Waverly School District where I actually teach, and working for twenty-four years as just a beloved custodian. Folks that know him know that he had kind of a world-class laugh, infectious energy, just an incredible, incredible guy. He was only sixty-four years old. Had just retired last fall, so we lost him way, way too early. So again, keep his friends, his family, and your thoughts and prayers tonight. And also, for folks such as Peter Spatafor, who was actually at or within that district, I think, when he was there, as a custodian myself, and the rest of the Waverly family, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional remembrance from council? All right, seeing none at this time. We'll stand for a moment of meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You have for approval the council proceedings of August 26th and September 9th.
Vice President Hussein?
Sure, both sets of, sorry, meeting minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. I would like to add to the September 9th on the back where it says remarks by council members. I made a comment, it currently reads, "Councilmember Jackson commented on board water and light rate increase." I would like to add, after increase, that board water and light was deceitful and misleading when they said the increase was for clean energy projects, but really, it's being used for another gas plant.
All right, I would accept that friendly amendment. I would move the amended amendment.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any additional comments? All right, seeing no additional comments, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes.
And we are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have a tribute in recognition of Lansing Church of God in Christ's one-hundredth anniversary.
All right, Councilwoman Carter?
If Reverend Yvonne Young Hall and Bishop Samuel Duncan can join me in the foyer? All right. Are you right over here? How you doing? Yes, hello, how you doing? Hello, good. All right, I'm just gonna read briefly some of the resolution before I pass it over to Mayor Shore. Well, resolved by the City Council of the City of Lansing, whereas on August 6, 1924, the Church of God in Christ was established by Elder Richard Wilson and held its first official Bible study at 914 William Street. And whereas a larger building was established at 1025 Birch Street, where the first service was held on Sunday, August 22, 1926, affectionately known as Birch Street Kojic. And whereas Sister Duncan was the first member of the church and ministry, missionary, excuse me, Carrie Williams came regularly to help. Whereas the Lansing Church of God in Christ proudly serve in community programs such as Food Pantry, Computer Learning Lab, CLIC, which is a youth learning homework mentoring ministry, and PEN, Prayer in the Neighborhood. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Lansing City Council hereby wishes to recognize the hundredth anniversary of the Lansing Church of God in Christ. We wish you continued success. And with that said, I move to approve the resolution.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Carter. We have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, seeing no additional comments, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
All right, I'm gonna be quick, because I don't want to duplicate. And I'm gonna see you all over the weekend. But as you know, I've been to your church, we'll say, a handful of times. And it is always an honor to come to Lansing Church of God in Christ. A hundred years. That is, you all look pretty good for a hundred. You look pretty good for a hundred. No, it's such a wonderful thing that you do, I mean, certainly for the faith community, but for the community in general. We know that you all are leaders in our community, helping people, whether it's spiritually or just with their homes or with whatever needs they have. So it's an honor just to recognize you in everything that Councilwoman Carter said. And I know that the rest of our council believes, I just want to agree with. So I'm not gonna read my proclamation, I'm gonna get to read the bottom, which I'm gonna do again at church. So God gets to hear it twice. "No, therefore, I, Andy Shore, Mayor of the City of Lansing, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim September 28, 2024, as Lansing Church of God in Christ Day in Lansing. As we look towards the future, we honor the past. May this day be one of celebration and reflection. I look forward to the contributions that Lansing Church of God in Christ will continue to make to the Lansing community in the next hundred years." Congratulations.
Well, to the Honorable Mayor and the City Council on this evening, it is an honor and a privilege to be before you on this evening, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your careful consideration in recognizing a century of service in this community. And we pray by faith that God will continue to utilize us to impact the community, changing the lives of men and women, boys and girls, both physically and eternally in the future to come. So again, thank each and every one of you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have a presentation on amending Chapter 1236, Design Standards for Parcel Dimensions.
All right, and we are going to bring down Susan Statuick, I do believe, yep, our zoning administrator, to discuss this. We actually had both Susan and our principal planner, Andy Fiedewa, into development and planning on the 11th. We have some proposed amendment changes to Chapter 1236. Later on tonight, after the presentation, obviously, we'll be considering a resolution to establish a public hearing for October 14th. So with that being said, Susan, we're gonna turn the floor over to you to discuss a little bit about what these amendments are and the rationale behind them. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. They're pretty low on the lights, actually. Turn on the light.
Can you make, yeah, can you make sure your green light's on? And pull it a little closer? Nope, on the actual microphone. It is, okay, thank you.
I think, try that button one time. Okay, that's better. Thank you. So the amendments involve eliminating a couple requirements that conflict with the state statute that regulates subdivisions and lot divisions, and with the city zoning ordinance. And those are establishing a width-to-depth ratio, wherein the depth of a lot cannot exceed two and a half times the width. It's unnecessary, it conflicts with the state statute on width-to-depth, and it results in just a bunch of requests for variances, all of which get approved because we have a lot of lots that, you know, already were platted, platted prior to the adoption of the current subdivision ordinance, exceeding that limit, that restriction, that width-to-depth restriction. It also establishes the ordinance, right now, a minimum width of a lot of sixty feet, minimum depth of a hundred feet, which again, which conflicts with the city zoning ordinances, again, results in a lot of variances. There's an example, a couple of examples on the page that I think you have in your packet here, that shows with the star, these were a couple of variances that came before the council within the last couple of years. And you could see that the lots that have like a bold line around them were the ones that were being requested for being split. And then I put this, when I submitted this to the council during the request, I put a star next to the lots that were similar, that also exceeded the minimum dimensions. You see, it was just about everything in there. So it didn't solve any purpose to make these folks go through, you know, a two-month variance process when it meets the intent of the code. So really, those are the only changes in a nutshell, is just eliminating these regulations from the subdivision standards and going with what's in the zoning ordinance, and bringing us, in the meantime, into compliance with the state statute. Or should I say that we don't conflict with the requirements in the state statute? And that's all I have on this. Any questions?
Okay, do we have any comments from council? Comments, questions? No, it seems pretty cut and dry here for us, Susan. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to add, Vice President Hussein? Okay, well, thanks for your time, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, we are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
All right, any comments from city council? Vice President Hussein?
Just very quickly, wanted folks to know that the rejuvenating South Lansing meeting that was initially scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled because both facilitators actually work for, one directs and actually works, and another one works for, but RSVP, and they are having a volunteer, I think, recognition ceremony or something like that tomorrow night that they have to facilitate. So they will be unable to facilitate the RSL meeting, but they are planning on meeting again the fourth Tuesday in October, 6:30 PM at 5825 Wise Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, floor's yours, city clerk.
All right, thank you. Just want to let folks know that this Friday, 21,000 of you are gonna have ballot hit the post office, so hopefully you'll start seeing them Saturday, many of you, and this election is rolling. So there's still plenty of time to register and still plenty of time to request about if you need to. So please contact my office, 483-4131, or visit us at lansingvotes.gov and find out how to do either of those things. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience with a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
The Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries is hosting their annual walking tour this Sunday, the 29th, at 3 PM in Mount Hope Cemetery, entitled Scattered Souls. It's a continuation of their celebration of Mount Hope Cemetery's 150th year, that they will highlight the graves of people originally buried in Oak Park Cemetery who were moved to Mount Hope Cemetery upon its opening in 1874. These scattered souls now rest perpetually in this historic and scenic cemetery. The walk will feature thirteen stops, come and listen and learn their stories. Light refreshments will be served at the halfway point, and it's a free and open-to-the-public event, which will go on rain or shine unless there's thunder or lightning. Mount Hope Cemetery is at 1709 East Mount Hope Avenue between Pennsylvania and Aurelius Roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community event announcements? All right, seeing none, then we are to registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters does include the two public hearings on the pilot programs, as well as the resolutions for action and ordinances, ordinance for introduction, so items five through nine on the printed agenda. We'll give you about another minute to get up and fill out a blue sheet in the back. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore?
All right, I got a bunch, but I'm gonna talk real fast, because I don't want to extend the meeting too long. First, I want to thank everybody who helped participate with the Lansing sign, the new big six-foot letters that we just released today over at Saginaw and Grand, so you all are gonna see it every time you come down Saginaw, it looks beautiful, unlike other signs in other parts of the state, I won't mention the cities. We actually have artists that did each letter, and I want to thank the artists, Emily Wilson, Teresa Dunn, Jasmine Wells, Kate Snyder, Sarah Pulver, Teresa Rosado, Marissa Tanni Thaler, it looks beautiful, you'll all see it, so I don't have to say much more. I want to thank everyone who helped put on Hispanic Heritage Month, which went extremely well, it was fantastic programs. Thank you to the folks who did our Lansing Rivers and Trails cleanup, we always see improvement after those events, so thank you. Congratulations to the Capital City Toastmasters on their 75th anniversary. Thank you all the employees who showed up for employee appreciation for the City of Lansing. It was really great at the Lansing Shuffle, and everyone got to try the food, eat ice cream, it was wonderful, and they played shuffleboard. Congratulations to our sister cities who had their 30th anniversary, that went extremely well. Thank you to our retirement, to our ERS and police and fire retirement boards who put on an incredible retirement conference for our City of Lansing retirees with incredible resources, it was wonderful. Congratulations to the four new businesses at 3700 South Waverly, Sparty Resell, Imangi Flexible Workspace, Youth Builder Community Development Corporation, and U-Haul. They all opened up. I wasn't able to make the grand openings, but I heard they went very well. Lon, the Lansing Area AIDS Network, had a great, had a great walk over the weekend. And then a few proactive stuff, anybody who is, who applies for our HRCS grants, our basic human need grants, there is a training tomorrow, being Tuesday, from 1 to 2:30 PM at Peckham. It's kind of an initial meeting where they can talk about what they've got, and we can train them on how to apply, so they can do everything right with applications. And the applications will open up in a month or two. We are doing a coat drive, so, and it's going really well. Several of our boxes are full, and they're emptying them and collecting. We need larger-sized coats, and especially gently worn or new coats. I know it's hard to even think about that now, but the winter is coming, we all know that, so, I know. Everybody, please donate your coats where you can. The folks over by Clifford Park should be happy, because we're starting to work on pickleball courts at Clifford Park. I guess two of the three tennis courts are also gonna have pickleball on it, so they're doing the paint and whatever else they do. So we'll have pickleball in Lansing at Clifford Park. And that's what I've got, Mr. President, as fast as I can talk. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Shore.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, that's items five through nine on the printed agenda. Items five and six are public hearings. Number five is a payment and lieu of taxes for Riverview 220 Apartments, and number six is payment and lieu of taxes for Grand Vista Place.
Vice President Hussein?
Yeah, so both of these are from the same applicant. Both are tax credit projects, the applicant in both cases are, I'm sorry, is the Lansing Housing Commission. Both of these applications are for 5% pilot service charges for forty years. It was explained to us by Doug Fleming, who was actually in our last council meeting during City Council for part of a presentation, that both of these actually received 10% pilots last year, but that sense, construction costs and things of that nature, have went up. With regard to this specific pilot application for 220 East Calumazoo Street, this is presently a parking lot, this would essentially share a block with the new city hall, so this is right there on the corner of, I'm sorry, right at Calumazoo and Grand, right across from the CTC. Being contemplated as a four-story building, which will contain a total of 63 housing units, seven of those will be market rate, 56 will be affordable housing, and then it also contemplates about 2,000 square feet of commercial space. The pilot would only apply to the 56 affordable units that will be essentially marketed to folks that are making at or below 60% of the AMI, so there are actually 56 place-based vouchers that will be administered by the Lansing Housing Commission as part of this project. So the other, there would be ad valorem taxes essentially paid on the other seven units, which are market rate, the 2,000 square feet of commercial space. As it pertains to the affordable units, estimated taxes without a pilot on a development such as this would be 229,000 a year, and the service charge to the city with a pilot is about 40,000 a year. So you're looking at about seven to eight million dollars over forty years. In terms of Grand Vista Place, 500 block of South Grand Avenue, again, an existing parking lot, this is across the street from the old Nassau State Journal Building, the completed project would contain a total of 55 affordable subsidized units, again, being marketed folks at 60% or below the AMI. Again, place-based vouchers will be administered by the Lansing Housing Commission as part of this project. The units include 11 one-bedroom units, 36 two-bedroom units, and three, no, eight three-bedroom units, I'm sorry. And if I, let me go back up real quick to 220 East Calumazoo. Of the 56 affordable units, 52 will be two-bedroom, and four will be three-bedroom. In terms of the 500 blocks of South Grand Avenue, estimated taxes for a fully-developed project such as this without a pilot would be about 216,000 a year, with the pilots about 38,000, again, a little more than $7 million over forty years. With that, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Do we have any additional comments from council? I do have a question, we're sitting in a public hearing, but I do have a question. Do you know by any chance who the construction managers?
I do not.
Okay.
No, I think we asked those questions, but they weren't that. Oh, Doug Fleming is here.
I see, Mr. Fleming, you mind coming down if you got an answer for that?
We have not officially selected a contractor yet, but it should happen probably in the next two weeks, it will be official. So we're in the process.
All right, thank you. Okay, so this is the public hearing, and those will get referred back to development.
I do want to acknowledge some written communications in support of the two pilots from the Ingham County Health and Human Services Director, from Catholic Charities of Ingham, Eaton and Clinton Counties, and from WAIIAM Inc. and Rise Recovery Community. And then here wishing to speak, we have Loretta Stanaway and David Ellis.
Well, since everybody seems very focused on keeping tonight so brief, as though we can't afford to spend more time here than what we really need, I'll just keep it really brief. No, no.
Thank you, next is David Ellis.
Hi, David Ellis, downtown Lansing resident. I'm gonna try hitting, oh, boy, I'm gonna try hitting three different things on this, so I'm gonna have to talk a little bit fast. I want to talk in support of the project, just to say that overall, but I want to talk about the development, the pilot, and then the developer. So first of all, the development in and of itself, I have absolutely no complaints about, I think the renderings could look a little nicer, though, but other than that, it's, this is a downtown zone, and it's a large dense building in an area that's already fairly mixed income. I mean, you have the new Genalotsi Tower going up two blocks north, one block to the west, you have City View Apartments where the rents start at 1,300 a month, so this isn't, this is gonna be a very mixed income area once this project is done. It's also apartment, it's a big, it's a large apartment building, I've heard some concerns about that from speaking with like friends of mine even, but I just, I want to say that no, apartments are perfectly fine to live in, so don't even, this is a downtown area, it's going to be dense, there's, I don't see any issue with that. Secondly, for the pilot itself, I wanted to say, I've said this before, I've heard everyone on council sort of offhand mention this, no one likes pilots, okay? No one likes cutting like potential tax revenue. I don't, I don't mind us receiving less tax revenue from a low-income housing development, right? Like, when you, if you think about it like this, we could extract, we could potentially extract more surplus value from this affordable housing. When you think about it on that regards, that sounds almost like evil, right? Like, it's affordable housing. Despite, despite that, it's still gonna be paying taxes. I did the math on it real quick, looking at the numbers they had provided, so per acre, it's gonna be paying roughly $44,300, like, per acre in tax revenue, which is about four times as much as a typical single-family home in the City of Lansing does. So we're still making hand over fist on this. This is gonna be paying more per acre than the majority of neighborhoods do. Not to disparage neighborhoods, but this is still, this is not a small amount of cash. And the final thing I wanted to tip was just talking about the developer. I've heard concerns from city council members about the LHC and other properties they've had. I'm not going to say those are invalid, we need to do our due diligence and make sure that they are staying on top of their stuff. Doing my homework and looking back at like some of the properties they had issues with, these, a lot of these are Victorian-era properties, like, they're going to have over a hundred years of baggage with them, so they're going to have astronomically higher maintenance costs. This is a brand-new, purpose-built building that's going to be directly next to their headquarters, and literally, the city council will be staring down at these two buildings. So I have full faith that we'll be able to keep everything in line here. So I would recommend you vote yes on these two pilots. Thank you.
Thank you. Now for the referral of the public hearings, number five.
Development and planning.
And number six.
Development and planning.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action, item seven is a tribute, we already did that, so item eight is setting a show cause hearing for 1044 Ontario Street.
Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. Briefly, we heard this at our last public safety meeting. It looks like this has been red-tagged since 7/1916. Currently, the SEV is 32,100, and this was a 30-day make-safed demolish by the demo board. The owner did not show up to the demo board. He did come to the Public Safety Committee, and I checked, as of 5:30 tonight, the permit situation remains the same, nothing has been pulled or changed.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Cost. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none. So is that a resolution to move forward with? Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so we have a proper motion in place? Seeing no additional comments, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing codified ordinances by amending Part 12, Title IV, Chapter 1236, Sections 1236.02, 1236.03, and 1236.07, to correct internal references and clarify lot size requirements for residentially zoned lots. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Vice President Hussein?
Sure, so we just had our zoning administrator in the well, talked a little bit about the necessity of these, and the fact that these would eliminate, among other things, some width-to-depth requirements that might even conflict with the state statute. So what we are looking to do is to establish a public hearing for October 14th at 7:00 PM. So with that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place? Any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. If you'd like to address the city council on any item relative to the operation or governance of the city, please sign in the back with Emma in the next minute. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Okay, Vice President Hussein?
I would move that all items be considered as read and full, and that appropriate referrals be made by you, President Garza.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place? Do we have any additional comments? All right, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have from the clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
And a grand acceptance institute for responsive government election administration grant.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
From the mayor, we have the appointment of Jonathan Smith to the Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Committee of the whole.
Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, two items relative to 1102 South Washington Avenue, Rio Ventures LLC.
Development and planning.
And two more items relative to the same property, these are for the Oprah certificate.
Development and planning.
We have two items relative to amending Chapter 606 to prohibit placement of signs in the right-of-way of public buildings, places, and facilities.
City operations.
And two items relative to amending Chapter 203 to establish service requirements for mu- municipal civil infractions arising from the unauthorized placement of signs.
Ways and means and internal auditor.
We have contract approval, Michigan Department of Transportation, Frontline Maintenance.
City operations.
Grant acceptance, automobile theft prevention authority grant.
Ways and means and internal auditor.
Grant acceptance, my local retirement grant program.
Ways and means and internal auditor.
And we have sole source purchase, Lansing Police Department request for all city management services as the vendor for the city of Lansing School Crossing Guard Program.
Ways and means and internal auditor.
And from the Board of Public Service, we have their budget priorities for the fiscal year 2526.
Committee of the whole.
Communications and petitions. We have an affidavit of disclosure, Nicholas Huggett of the Lansing Police Department.
Ethics board.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Any additional remarks from council? Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. Sorry, I did not mention this. For that property that we just spoke about, it will be 9:30 will be the show cause hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to remarks by the mayor.
Any additional marks? All right, no additional remarks.
Okay, we are to public comment. We have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Kyle Darnell
This is just an FYI suggestion, kind of a comment. I see through the media that the, second time now, that the superintendent of the Lansing Public Schools has come out in the media stating something that the later LPD refuted. And, you know, can be up to interpretation as to who is right and who is wrong. But I think that there needs to be someone who says to the police and to the superintendent, don't go to the media with these things until you get your ducks in a row and you're all agreeing on what the facts are, because this is disruptive, and it leads to a belief that, you know, people are speaking out of two sides of their mouths, and who is right and who is wrong can get lost in the shuffle. So I would just suggest that somebody from maybe the administration make that comment to the superintendent, that he should await the police's determinations before he's commenting to the public on what may or may not have happened in a violent crime incident. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kyle Darnell Jones, followed by Linda Epling.
I'm Kyle Jones. I live in Lansing, Eaton County. On September 9th, representatives from Eaton Co. appeared before this committee. They stated Eaton Co. was seeking a 3% increase in property taxes to fund various provisions. Technically, this is correct. However, the 3% must be added to the 5% residents are already charged. This means that the total percent is going to be 8%. Thus, you would be engaging in a total of an 8% property tax on the residents of your city. The second issue with this is where the money would actually be spent. Many of the areas in need of funding are already being paid for by Eaton County Lansing residents via city tax. Given this fact, it's not likely that Eaton County Lansing residents would see any of the tax money returned to their areas for services. Based on this, I can't support an increased tax sought by Eaton County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Linda Epling, followed by Jody Washington.
I'm here to talk about the Board of Water and Light. First of all, as I understand it, the Board of Water and Light is technically owned by the residents of this city. Yet, the residents seem to have little or no say over what our charges are. Recently, the Board of Water and Light has been charging a higher rate for electricity used during the day, i.e. from hours, I think, from 2:00 to 8:00 PM. This is based, apparently, on the BWL's assumption that, quote, "people use less electricity during that time." The BWL forgets about, A, retired persons, of which I am one and don't appreciate this increase. Two, persons who work from home, and persons who may be disabled, and persons may be at home with their children. Thus, under these BWA provisions, these persons are expected to pay a higher rate for use of electricity. I'm uncertain exactly where the BWA thinks that we are supposed to go. Perhaps we should go get in our coffins and stay there to 8:00 PM, and then rise as vampires do and do whatever we need to do during that particular hour. In terms of that, now, we do not just perform tasks at 8:00 PM at night. This makes no sense. Why am I required to pay a higher rate? Given these circumstances, it's clear the need exists for greater control over the Board of Water and Light. You have the ability to do this. You can put on the ballot a provision that gives you the authority to control the rates of the Board of Water and Light, and put that up for election by the people of this city. As it currently stands, you know, we are being essentially priced out of everything. And this makes no sense to tax the residents at high and to tax those that are the lower end of economic scale in terms of that. It really makes no sense. I don't know who came up with this stupid idea, but if I had them before me, I'd fire them.
Thank you. Next, we have Jody Washington, and then David Ellis.
Jody Washington, I was afraid you guys might have forgotten that I am an absolute no on those pilots for the Lansing Housing Commission. Those of you that have been here for more than a minute know exactly what the LHC history is. You know that the 200-plus single sites they had that they sold because they said they couldn't afford to maintain them were despicable and should have been torn down. We also know that they have Waverly Place, 3200 South Washington, Leroy Frow, and I could go on and on and on. And the only improvements they've ever made there was like lipstick on a pig, and they didn't even hold up. The siding fell off, the water's coming through the ceiling. Doug Fleming is rude to all the residents. They do not have a friendly staff for the people that need them the most. We're talking about people at risk. And I have been with the people I mentor and advocate for to the LHC, and it's disgusting. So I would ask you to please do not give them another favor and give them a 5% pilot. And Mayor Shore, I would ask you that you stop pushing every pilot that comes our way through to the city council. This can be stopped long before it gets to them. We don't have to take all of it. I absolutely agree, we have an affordable housing crisis, but it's not Lansing's crisis. It's a national crisis, and it is more than, for us, a regional crisis. We no longer can afford to give up our property tax and to give up potential income tax if we want to provide services for all of the residents. So enough is enough. When we start seeing the surrounding areas take their fair share, I will be on board. But stop pushing all this through. Once the land is gone, it's gone forever. And I would welcome any of you with your children or your nieces and nephews to move in to one of those apartments when they're built. Raise your children there and see how well you would like it. Just like the senior citizen apartment building, you stuck right beside the shelters. It's gross, it's disgusting, and I told you then, some of you were not, council. You be the first to sign up and put your mother in there. And I want you to be the first to sign up and raise your children in these apartment buildings. But more than that, for the rest of us residents, we can't afford anymore. Andy, stop pushing all of these through. Be selective. And if, you just don't have to do it. But you put the onus on the council, and it's not fair. So, and we do have to look at the BWL and the charter, Brian, we really do.
Thank you. Our final speaker tonight is David Ellis.
Hi, David Ellis. I'll be very brief with this. It was just a concern I had at the last city council meeting. Usually, it seems like we're pretty good about this, but I've been noticing occasionally more and more, it seems like we've been slipping on it. If I come, if I come up here and I give a comment and I say, I oppose something, I'm opposing something, and then the next person who comes up and says their comment, they say, here is why David Ellis is wrong. Here is why you should support it instead. I don't get a chance to respond to them. That's not fair for me. I'm at like a disadvantage because I gave my comment first. That's why we have debates. Debates are where you get to respond to each other's comments, but this is not a debate. Our comment, we're allowed to, they're public, so we're going to hear each other, obviously, but they have to, we have to think about them as if we're giving our comments in a vacuum. And actually, the city charter does back this up. I have, it's Chapter 21001, Rules of Council, Rule Number 18, in the second paragraph. It has the line, if I can spot it in my text really quick, "In no case is the opportunity of a citizen to speak to be in the nature of a debate." So it's, we're usually pretty good about this. I just want to make sure that we're keeping everything sharp and tight on it. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I do have one correction to make. Item 18 and 19, those will both go to city operations. And 20, I apologize, and 20. 18, 19, and 20 will all go to city operations. With that, there's no further items on the agenda. We are adjourned.